...Board of Education, please stand for the flag.
I will pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sage?
Yes.
Student staff recognition and building reports.
Mark is up. We in the high school never get to go first, so...
There you go.
Yeah!
It is certainly my privilege and honor to talk about our Staff Members of the Month, and we have picked out two because they work so well together. They have like a dynamic duo, backhand and Robin. So, please give me a round of applause, Ed Schaper and Mary Weiss. Come on! Come on, come on! This is actually very fitting and who the personalities are. They do not seek recognition and certainly... It is why they really deserve it. I don't think people realize how many fires that these two women put off on a daily basis. I don't think people really understand how patient and caring these two women are. I think the word that always gets thrown out about these two are "saints." They do a job that very few teachers honestly could do or want to do, you know? And you work with the best. And the other thing I think they do very well is differentiated learning. You think about what they have to do first hour all the way to sixth hour. They are teaching all subjects to students of all levels. And so, it really is my privilege and honor. And I'll be honest, it was a long time since I became an administrator that I knew exactly what was going on in their room and just blown away by their dedication. So, this is Weiss, Mr. Schaper. Thank you.
Our Students of the Month. So, if we had two Staff Members of the Month, we had to have two Students of the Month. Mr. Rand is up here, you know, she has four, six, you know, how many she gets. So, I'm on the spotlight a little bit. These two young men are being recognized for a really specific reason, and they're high achievers, you know, here in the school. They participate, you know, in lots of school activities, but it's not even for that. This is kind of selfish that they made my notice one day last week. I had the opportunity, and I'll just tell you, you know, who they are and explain. It's Mr. Mark Mon Young and Jason Pope are our Students of the Month. I'm like butcher the name of this, so guys, stop me if I say it wrong, but it's just so long. The Great Lakes Bay Leadership Institute or...what was it? I forgot one word. Youth, okay? Youth Leadership Institution. This was so cool. And I'm almost embarrassed at how little I knew about what they were actually doing throughout the year. They were going, I think, at least once a month and participated with 36 schools or something like that from around the region with sending representatives to learn how to be future leaders. And they're not future leaders, they're already leaders. I mean, it was very clear, both working with them here, but especially that night, didn't have dinner with them and their families. I learned some things that, I mean, didn't want to know, but overall, you know, it was just an awesome experience. And these are two unbelievably impressive young men. Let's give them a round of applause.
I'd like to know very quickly that Principal McCarthy chose these two because these two spent four hours Christmas wrapping my office. They wrapped everything. Everything was wrapped. It took them four hours.
Okay, thank you.
Two with a lot of help, so this was not my choosing. So, did we put the next one here?
Did you get many presents in there? Just some stuff?
For those of you that don't know, Mark is the one that was responsible for doing the fundraising for the drums for Mayan.
Actually, Mark and Jason were outstanding middle school students as well. I'd see they were recognized during the high school. They've done a lot for our district over the years. Our Middle School Staff of the Month, I've given that honor to Mrs. Amy Heinz this month. I'm going to forgive some that she does. It's very important, I'm sure. But I think for the most part...
She won't move.
What Mrs. Heinz does is, one of the things that she does, she makes all the extra plans for all the field day events, for all the team achieve projects, for all the movie games, for all the spirit weeks that we have in the middle school. Mrs. Heinz organizes that all for our kids. And it makes their meditation and their enjoyment that much more fun. She enhances, she helps with all the M-Step and meat testing. She helps her school improvement team. Anything that needs to be done and organized and detailed, Mrs. Heinz completes for us. Mrs. Heinz is definitely the detailed person of our staff at Bridgeport Middle School. And we all appreciate her efforts and her work at Bridgeport Middle School. Since the high school had two Students of the Month...
More than three.
I have three.
You brought your whole basketball team last.
So, you know, I have three very unique and special individuals. Not only are they outstanding students in the school, their hallway behavior, their classroom behavior, their academic ability in the classroom, they are superior for all those reasons. But I think what makes them special and one of the things that I appreciate the most is every year we send a group of students to represent our school district at the UBE the Canvas Competition at Saginaw Valley State University. And to do this, one, the students have to want to do this. They have to volunteer for this project. And then on top of that, they have to study at home. This isn't something that they necessarily learn in school. This is something that requires some self-discipline and some self-motivation to want to do, to represent our school at this competition. And they represent our school with schools all across the Great Lakes Bay region. The Midland Schools, SASA, Saginaw Township, Carlton, there's a lot of different schools there. And these three individuals represented our school this year, 2015, at the UBE the Canvas Competition. And I think that needs to be recognized. They did an outstanding job. They represented our school proudly. And I'm proud to say that they're part of our dad, they're dad family. And those three individuals are Jennifer Fraser. Hannah Jordan. Well, I'd say we're high up in the staff members, that's for sure. I know that. And then maybe they can help me with the students. I'll bet. First of all, we have a Staff Member of the Month from Thomas White. This is Kim Aspen. I'm glad to meet you. I'm very much, but I'm glad to see you're back and up for walking. Because last time I saw you, one last, I'm a little worried about her. I look so inferior today. And then our Martin Atkins Elementary Teacher of the Month, who I've worked with for a long time.
What is I...
Well, how are you surprised? I was going to make this work.
Thank you. Ms. Aspen.
Ms. Aspen was nominated by her peers' teachers because she's a person and Thomas White to help problem solve. I wrote something up here that says she's nominated by her peers because she's someone who they trust. She's knowledgeable, caring, and a devoted person to help figure things out. Ms. Aspen is very helpful and a generous person.
And Ms. Ricker, Ms. Stacy Ricker.
Ms. Ricker was also nominated as Teacher of the Month by her peers because she's hard working and always seeks to help others. Ms. Ricker continues to collaborate with her colleagues to create better students. And she volunteers, she volunteers her time to instill love in musical both choir and music through talent show. Ms. Ricker is a high energy person. She gets things done. And I'm pleased to honor her with the Atkins Teacher of the Month.
Again, sorry, everyone. For Students of the Month, I would like to honor the fellow from Thomas White, Jabari Lewis. Jabari is a kindergarten from the Sastin's Room. Jabari is an excellent student who always listens and follows directions. Jabari is very helpful and demonstrates good behavior and manners all the time.
And then from Atkins, we have Brayden Kellogg. He's a fifth grader from the sculpture. He is a hard worker and a really nice student. He actively touches kids during lessons, ensuring people are able to understand each other. When his work is complete, he offers to assist others. Brayden is always willing to help the teacher as well. He works quietly and gets along well with others. Brayden truly deserves to be student of the Month.
Okay, next is a closed session as provided for in Act 267, 1976, stretch of page eight, Exemptary District. Someone please make the motion to go into a closed session for that reason?
Come on.
Move by box, sort of like that. Roll call please. Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
They convene the main event since their presentation. Veronica Tucker? Waiting for Mr. Nelson to come in?
Who's in the minute for the PTO?
Good evening. I'm members of the board. Again, my name is Veronica Tucker. I'm up here on the end of the PTO that meets at the high school on, usually the first Thursday of the year at six o'clock. So, any parents that are here, you're more than welcome. I'm out. The high school at six o'clock. This meeting, the last meeting was canceled, so it should be this Thursday at six o'clock in the library at the high school. We are always encouraging for small and interested in the PTO. In the March meeting that I emailed, or that I have an email to you guys because during the last meeting it was brought up that some of you can't access your emails, so I figured I'd print them out and you can just view it on the paper here. Old business that we talked about, the movie issues, Officer Green again, that was brought up, but per our last discussion, Officer Green went to and talked to the children, or the, sorry, young adults in their classrooms and just went over what his purpose was with the kids at the school. So, we're hoping that the previous thoughts about how full Officer Green is equipped and maybe it's kind of will get cleared up doing that. In your class, information was discussed, the trip, this partnership commission dinner in town, we discussed, we discussed things that might be happening next year. Ms. Lagal, Ms. McCarthy went over those things. And then for the business, we also talked about the ACT that our kids took, our juniors, and benefits that happened for those that received scores above seventeen. And then the new cell phone policy also was discussed. So, that's what's going on in those meeting notes that I just gave you guys. And if anybody likes them, you can ask, what? If you step by, get some from me. As far as that, that's all I got from the PTO. On another note, I'd like to thank Ms. Carol Selby for meeting with me and Mr. Brown. Grant opportunities for the school. We're in desperate need of funding and thank you so much for everything that you're doing. Appreciate it. You really have taken in a role that some people would probably not do well. And you're doing fabulous, and I thank you for that from the bottom of my heart for all these kids who desperately need, you know, that guidance, that leadership you're there. For our administrators, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Baker, Mr. Rand, Mr. Lagal, you guys are doing a fabulous job as well. Teachers, keep doing what you're doing. You know, like you guys, for the beginning of the year was a rocky start. Everything that you've done, don't let what's going on now overshadow that. You know, this is the positive. You guys are the positive. The kids are our positive. I just wish that leadership on the board level would happen. That's all I got. Thank you. If you want to use the rest of my minutes, feel free.
John Ryan's unanswered questions?
Good evening, Board Members of the Administration. I want to first start out by acknowledging the much-needed positive progress that I hear is happening throughout our district. First and foremost, I would like to personally thank Mrs. Selby for her outstanding efforts and positive leadership skills she has brought to this struggling district. It's obvious that her focus is to better the environment of this district and to ensure that our students truly have a solid foundation for a successful life. In a finance meeting last week, it was mentioned that all 23 grievances that were filed under the leadership of Tom Hill have been settled through the diligent work of Mrs. Selby and our unions. Technology throughout the district has greatly improved. The MERC filing has been addressed and hopefully will soon bring closure. Communication between administration, staff, and community members have also greatly improved, mostly due to the accessibility of our acting superintendent. Kudos to Mrs. Selby for her willingness to accept this challenge that she has and the dedication for her time, efforts, expertise, and to save this district that was on a path for destruction. Your acceptance of these duties with little to no guidance and zero financial compensation to date proves that your top priority is truly our students. Thank you. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm not only here to discuss the positives. It's unfortunate that seven weeks ago, we were told by the attorney, Joe Urban, that we would be updated soon and that our backpack note is still lost in somebody's backpack. I'm sure you can all tell by now, I'm a very attentive person, and I've yet to hear any answers regarding the questions that I've asked repeatedly. What is going to take, what is it going to take for us to get the answers that we deserve? It's time for the truth to come out about the status of Tom Hill. Based on my latest FOIA request, I have found out that he is still on active payroll to this date. He is not on sick leave. We have paid him over $21,000 in 2015 to set somewhere other than our district. It was brought up at a finance meeting that this budget, that our budget, was just adjusted again from $20,000 to $80,000 to cover legal expenses. Not something that we need to turn our head to. These increases are going to affect our debt, and they are spiraling out of control. The only people that are getting rich here are the attorneys, not our district. In December, I asked the Board President if she knew about the $2,000 movie expense check that was issued to Tom Hill. She told me in a phone conversation that she knew nothing about it. Last month, I asked her again in an email with a list of other questions that I had asked her. Her response was, "I don't remember. You'll need to FOIA your answers." So, being the person that I am, I submitted a FOIA request. Upon receiving my FOIA, I found out that she not only knew about it, she approved it by signing the payment request that Tom Hill submitted on July 15th of 2014. How could she authorize this when the MASB clearly states that all expenses and reimbursements to superintendents must be accompanied by receipts? And the form that she signed clearly states his address was Ann Arbor. I don't believe that he moved when she issued a check and was sent to Ann Arbor. It is obvious that Mrs. Sageman has made decisions outside the right of a board member, and this is just one of many examples. I will submit additional FOIA requests that will prove this to be true. I'm certain it will prove her involvement in the separation agreement with Jennifer McDonough and that has cost this district well over $40,000. Based on the information she provided in emails and the information that I obtained through FOIA request, I'm asking that Martha Sageman resign her seat on the board immediately in lieu of costing this district yet additional expenses that we do not have the funds to cover. In closing, I must ask each and every one of you board members if this is truly the person that you want representing our district at the state level. If she does not resign her seat on the board, you by law have the power to remove her from her authority as a position of president. Please consider the condition of our district and the added financial strain that she has placed, and remember that our students depend on the board as their solid foundation. This district needs immediate change.
Ms. Aspen, thanks for Thomas White superintendent concerns.
Good evening. I'm here on the top. On behalf of Thomas White Elementary School, we would like to publicly thank Chief Nelson, Chief Burns, Mrs. Sageman, Mr. Long, Mr. Lang, Mrs. Selby for helping to make our March three month at Thomas White a huge success. Our children keep asking every day, are our visitors going to come back? We want to hear some more stories from the grownups. So, anytime you have some free time, we'd love to have you come back and read. Now, as a community member, I have a question. No disrespect to coach and athletic issue that happened last month. Seven days after it was brought to our school board's attention that there was an issue, there was a special meeting held, and there was a plan of action taken to correct whatever the issue may have done. It hasn't been solved totally, but there was a plan of action. Since December, we have asked you numerous times about our superintendent's status. And as you heard from Mr. Ryan, he is getting paid continued, and yet it is nearly four months, and we do not have any action given to us publicly. It just embarrasses me again that once again athletics has taken a top priority of our academic status and our staff and our superintelligence issue here in Bridgeport's following school. I am just appalled. That's four months and no answer. But it took seven days, a special meeting held, and action was taken about an athletic coach's position. Please, please, I am begging you, give us the answers we deserve, our children deserve, and our community deserves.
Then to you, introduction of the CEO Energy, Mr. Allen.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Flynn Cheney, 633 Rivers Weary Road. I don't know much about Bridgeport's community on that video. But I read in the Bridgeport Herald recently about the financial problems that Bridgeport is having. So, I went to school and I took a copy of the utility bills. I am with CEO Energy out of Flint. It's a, one of the country's largest energy brokers serving 36 states in Canada. I took those utility bills and I figured out what I could say Bridgeport. Here's... Here's Interstate Gas Company, that's what we currently have. Last year, we used one thousand nine hundred and forty MCF which equals one thousand feet. We paid four dollars ninety-five cents for a thousand feet for a total of one hundred and three thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Using last year's figure with today's rate, CBO earned twenty thousand nine hundred and forty feet, or a thousand feet MCF, three dollars and sixty-nine cents for a thousand feet for seventy-seven thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars for supplying their gas last, like last winter. And we would add in contract, which would have been a savings of twenty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. So I'm really encouraging the board members to meet with me, give me a little bit of time. If you would decide, would want to use our company, we would be thankful to have you. We also, the electricity is gonna be deregulated in a short period of time, we hope. Just ten percent of it is all. We would put the school on the waiting list. There's over eleven thousand businesses on the waiting list right now, but you would save twenty percent right on top of your electric bill. If you're not on the waiting list when it's deregulated, you will not forget about ownership. And one last thing we offer to the people that use our service, we do a four-year audit on the utility bills on a convenience basis. If there's no recovery, then there's no cost. If there is a recovery, forty-five percent of the refund, if this is money that you don't even know that you've got coming, we have a seventy percent success rate in our audits. I just did a little bridge in school out on that corner of the street recently. They're getting a look, they're getting back eight hundred dollars for the four-year audit. This is very common, a lot of big businesses recover incredible amounts of money that they have been overcharged. And not only do they recover the money, but CBO also corrects the mistake so it is not made in the future. So I appreciate your time. I know these little cards, these folks up there, if anybody wants to get a hold of me, please do so.
Russell Williams, letter from Anwar Jackson, county office of the athletic association.
Hello, I am Russell Williams and I'm here on behalf of Anwar Jackson. And there is a matter that came in on March twenty-third from the Michigan High School Athletic Association that acting superintendent Mrs. Selby sent in from Bridgeport School. Evidently, there was not enough information sent in, so I guess they're requesting again for Bridgeport to get with Anwar and I guess Arthur Hill to get some of these things straightened out. But Anwar also submitted something to superintendent Selby also. And I did bring those two, and also I wanted to say that I was at the Saginaw School Board last week and they are trying to work out something with one of the other students that left here, which this young man is still at jeopardy. He can't even go out and get on the fields to run track. So with all of this that has been brought forth and has been shown to you all, I'm just asking that some action be taken also with Anwar to see exactly what happened. Not only is it, it's not about the coaches, it's really about the kids. There's still two students that's not active. It's not about Anwar at all, it's not about Farmer. I really don't know that much about Farmer either, but I have submitted those to each one of you all and thank you again for your time.
Hello, I am just coming today to give you our update for our robotic team. We finished, we completed two competitions. Our last competition with the students that were on our team, it was a small team, we were the smallest team that competed. Some teams had up to twenty, twenty-five members, we had five members. And our last competition, we placed eighteenth out of forty teams and had three teams above us, if they, their robots would have broke down, we would have qualified to go to state. So as a first-year robotic team, I think we made Bridgeport proud. Thank you.
Can I just, can I just piggyback on that because I went to one of those competitions and I was extremely proud of our team and thankful that Cindy was there to work with our kids who really, sounds like none, none of them really had a clue as to what they were doing, but they all rose to the occasion. And a special thank you to Cindy's husband and Cindy's father for stepping in and supporting the team. And all of you would have been so very proud if you would have seen our five students competing among all those hundreds of kids. The gym at, was it Dow, Millidow High School was packed with kids. This was a very big thing our kids did, so I really look forward to our students participating next year. I, I look forward to many more of our students joining the team and I look forward to us finding more ways to support our team financially.
Julie.
You didn't call my name, right?
Yeah, I did.
No, I'm still here, I left yet. Good evening, I'd like to support the comments of Mr. Ryan's here. I agree with virtually everything he said. We do have some very important issues in this district that need to be settled. We also have some positive things going on since I've gotten up here and complained before. I found myself on a number of committees, rewriting the handbook is one of them. We came up with a viable cell phone use policy that has been implemented at the high school with a great deal of success. I'm also on a grant writing committee that is now up and running and we're soliciting priority lists of textbooks and other materials to help our teachers in the classroom. And we have also settled the vast majority of our grievances in an equitable fashion. However, many difficult tasks still remain. Our central office is hampered, getting no progress because they have this cloud hanging over them. To continue positive progress, we need a cohesive, intelligent, and decisive leadership. We need a united school board, we need an empowered superintendent, we need effective administrators, and we need highly qualified teachers. The solution to this is to decide what to do with Mr. Hill. It's been long enough, we've spent enough money, we've had enough damage. His record speaks clearly. We had twenty-three grievances in seven weeks under the guidance of Mr. Hill. We had multiple lawsuits, we lost a number of qualified staff. The best thing to do at this point is to admit that a serious mistake was made when this man was hired and move forward. Support the helpful staff you have in place. Terminate our association with Mr. Hill as soon as you can and as equitably as you can, thereby allowing us to renew, restore, and rebuild our academic community here in Bridgeport. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Julie Lookavoli, I'm the sixth grade math teacher at Atkins Middle School, and I'm here representing the teachers of the VEA. We just wanted to let you know, and it sounds like we're not alone, and appreciating the stability that's been experienced since Mrs. Selby has been in place, we are asking that any replacement be hired only after a thorough tour for a qualified teacher as long as that may take. We would appreciate the opportunity to have input and process. This is a petition that's been signed by the teachers of the VEA in support of these ideas. Each of the board members has received a copy by both email and regular mail, and I'm gonna give this copy to Ms. Selby.
Unfinished business and/or agenda adjustments?
Yeah.
We need to adjust the agenda to include the resolution to approve settlement of pending administrative litigation petition for representative proceedings on fair labor practice charge. Motion was made by Pat, we need support. Supported by Kenny. Roll call, did our, does that can be read? Bob, do you wanna go ahead and read it?
Sure, since we haven't identified where it is, we'll just next to it.
Zero four, one, three, one, five, point oh seven, I'm sorry, oh six, A. And just under unfinished business, small A. Okay, well, it was, it's been supported, roll call please. Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
And Mrs. Sagerman.
Yes.
God, you can read it loud. Do you have the copy?
Uh, yeah, sorry. Whereas Bridgeport's Hall and Community School District Board of Education has presented the recommendation dated April tenth, two thousand and fifteen to resolve two pending administrative litigation matters, and whereas the pending administrative litigation matters involving a petition for representation proceedings, i.e. imminent certification, and unfair labor practice charge pending before the Michigan Employment Relations Commission, and whereas the Board of Education has considered the recommendations and has the opportunity to review the proposed settlement with council, and whereas the Board of Education of the Bridgeport's Hall and Community School District upon consideration has determined that there is a benefit to concluding pending administrative litigation matters and avoiding further costs associated with pursuing these matters, and therefore is resolved, the Board of Education of Bridgeport's Hall and Community School District agrees to the following. One, the Board of Education agrees to review the question of the non-renewal of contracts of the TBAS interventionalist previously deliberacy academic coach K-5, mathematics academic coordinator, two positions, one K-5 and the other is sixth through twelve, and the coordinator of professional learning and data assessment at its committee of the whole meeting scheduled for April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Two, the Board of Education approves providing reasonable assurances of employment for the following school year for TBAS interventionalist and coordinator of professional learning and data assessment. Three, the Board of Education approves ratifies the proposed settlement agreement outlining, outlining the party's agreement to resolve all matters related to the Bridgeport Education Association and the NDA's petition for representation proceedings on fair labor practice charge and any related grievances. This approval ratification includes granting authority to the acting superintendent and the school district's attorney to make minor modifications and/or clarifications to propose settlement agreement that do not alter the substance of the agreement as outlined on April tenth, two thousand and fifteen recommendation. The Board of Education approves and directs the acting superintendent's draft and propose a position description or a position to replace the coordinator of professional learning and data assessment creating an administrative and/or supervisory position to carry out administrative and managerial matters related to professional learning and data assessment and additional administrative and supervisory responsibilities and to present the new position description for board approval review and.
Roll call please.
Hold on, the motion in support. I wouldn't like the motion that we accept the proposal for the support petition.
Motion by Bob, supported by Leslie, roll call please. Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
And Mrs. Sagerman.
Yes.
Committee reports, Billings and Grounds Finance. I'm sorry, Mr. Morris.
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't really break down the minutes too much, but we did have the finance village meeting at four thirty PM on the ninth. Next meeting is scheduled for May fifth, also at four thirty. And Kenneth was myself, member Nelson, and member Morris, Carol Selby, Melissa Dupree, Peter Visserly, and Kristen Tunnel. Some of the things that we had in what they for grounds, because Mr. Redd, he's on vacation still, and as usual. But we'll get caught up on that. We discussed some of the things we discussed were the DEP moving forward, to establish some legal fees. We also discussed, and very good news, were, there were a lot of grievances that have been filed. We discussed the need for twenty fifteen, sixteen-year, need for a high school teacher in chemistry. The reason, the legal fee, or the grievances that have been resolved. Athletic finances, we've had some issues in the past with pay-to-play, fundraising, and the need, and the expectations that moving forward, we will have better controls with that not happening again. Meeting lasted roughly, I believe, two hours and discussing in-depth what these controls need to be. I'll be rolling ahead.
Grigland Committee meeting was held on Friday, the tenth, and that meeting also lasted approximately two hours. Members present, Mrs. Morris, Mrs. Selby, Mr. McCarty, Ms. Sylvie, and yours truly. Pat and I don't have our last name, but people, accounting also met with us for a portion of the meeting. And of course, Mrs. Johnson participated with information and some input into the meeting on that day. Some of the agenda items included marketing Bridgeport community schools and looking at strategies to develop marketing plans for the schools of choice, the Great Sea Program, and Project Lead the Way, which is the high school initiative for STEM. We also discussed how to publicize and the marketing and recruitment aspect to our schools through signs, local newspapers, and of course, media, television, radio media. We were given information about the enrollment process for schools of choice. We decided on several window periods in which to make student enrollment available for those outside of our district. We talked about transformation and Mrs. Selby gave an extensive explanation on that process. We talked about, uh, transformation and, uh, Miss Sylvie gave an, uh, extensive, um, uh, explanation on that process along with the PPIS grant, the cultural and climate grant programs that could, uh, come from involvement in that particular grant. We discussed planning for the next school year, which, uh, would look at, uh, some additions perhaps to an administrative position, type position at Thomas White. Uh, we, uh, talked extensively about boosting the positiveness of the Thomas White Elementary K program and, and how we could use that really as a feeder to attract and maintain students in the district. Mr. McCarty talked about project lead the way. He, uh, gave some tentative dates on when some of those programs and activities would take place in the high school. And we talked, uh, quite extensively before the end of the meeting about teacher recognition and how to empower them and how to ensure that they knew that we know that they're doing a fantastic job.
Check register, minutes personnel report moved to approve the March, check register minutes from the March ninth business meeting, March eleventh expulsion hearing, March sixteenth special meeting, March eighteenth expulsion, expulsion hearing and personnel report. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make it.
Motion by Larry. I need support.
Support.
Support by Bob, roll call please. Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mrs. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Sage.
Yes.
Authorization to approve the acting superintendent to hear expulsions. I need a motion to approve the acting superintendent to hear expulsions when the board cannot be.
Have some move.
Motion by Nancy, support by Pat.
Yes.
Roll call, or is there any discussion first? Eric Nan, roll call. Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mrs. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
And Mrs. Sage.
Yes.
Acting superintendent stipend discussion and approval by Melissa Habee.
I'm sure everyone on the board received the Title One compliance letter. Uh, we had an audit, uh, it was completed, but there were some findings. One of the findings was that at this point, um, Carol Selby is Title One Director and also acting interim superintendent for the Bridgeport Spalding School District. The audit firm has been auditing the school district on Title One for the last three years at least. And they also submitted a report to the state on the findings. Because we worked well with them and asked them for some time, I wanted to inform the board a decision needs to be made on the con interim contract Carol Selby in a stipend format. Um, that was their biggest concern. She can still remain as Title One Director. If this is not done, we stand to lose Title One funding and I want the board to realize Title One funding being school funding for our kids. So, um, I don't know if, um, our attorney is here to address the contract. I would give her an opportunity to do so and we'll proceed forward after that.
Thank you. I'm Ann Vanderwan, attorney of Clark Gilt, and I am, uh, attorney of the board and I'm here to address the issue of the acting superintendent's employment agreement, um, and I have a draft with me, which I will share with the board in a moment. And I can ask, answer a couple of questions. I'm not Joe Urban, but I'm with the firm. Uh, we, uh, let's put it this way, I don't like backpack notes and so, um, when Joe Urban had some issues, um, unrelated to work, um, and I indicated to the board I did not want to put a note in the backpack. I will tell you that the current superintendent is Mr. Thomas Hill, who has a three-year contract, January, or July one, twenty fourteen, June thirty, twenty seventeen. In order to terminate the contract, the board needs good and just cause is the standard. Mr. Hill went out on medical leave on December eighth of twenty fourteen. There's been no change in that status at this time. He is currently being paid under his superintendent contract in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract. There's currently an ongoing matter involving a personnel matter, if you will, um, and at some point, uh, the board may be asked to be involved in that process in accordance with the terms and conditions of Mr. Hill's superintendent contract. There's a provision in there. So now you know where his familiarity there is or isn't and you know that we're following the contract, which we're required to do. There's over two years left on a contract in excess of ninety-five thousand dollars a year of salary plus benefits. So needless to say, the contract has to be followed, contract has to be, all the procedures, due process, all the rights that public school employees are entitled to, both constitutionally and contractually need to be followed. And that's my job to make sure, or part of my job to make sure that that is done. Uh, in the interim, Ms. Selby is, um, acting superintendent as your finance person, uh, I'm sorry, I don't put your, your name, your title correctly, but, um, she also, she is the title person for, uh, title person in the district as administrator and she's also acting superintendent. I drafted a draft acting superintendent's employment agreement for the board. Board has not seen it prior to tonight. And there are certain provisions that we think legally need to be in the contract so that you do not end up with two superintendent contracts. So therefore I'm going to distribute them to the board, uh, the contracts to the board. Um, basically the contract would begin December eighth, twenty fourteen, which is my understanding, the date that Mr. Hill went out on medical leave. Would terminate upon twenty-four hour notice because in the event that your superintendent, Mr. Hill, returns, you need a short notice provision so you're not paying two people to be your superintendent. And that the contract will not extend beyond June thirty, twenty fifteen, and that is for reasons under Michigan law, which, uh, pertains to administrator contracts, which have, uh, required notice provisions in order to non-renew an administrator contract. And therefore we don't want to get into legal arguments, whether the non-renewal process may or may not have been properly followed. I've worked with Ms. Selby, I've hired Ms. Selby, she and I, I think up until a few minutes ago, uh, now, we have a good working relationship. I have nothing against Ms. Selby, but obviously I'm representing the board and so the contract that I've proposed to the board has to make sure all the legal arguments are covered relative to, uh, the board. So I'm going to pass the copy out to the board and if the board wants to ask questions or discuss or if there's other provisions of the contract that people want to talk about, um, but those are the reasons why the contract is written the way that it is. And Ms. Selby will also continue to be paid for her administrator contract for her Title One or for her title coordinator work. I don't quite get the correct title. Um, and her, uh, contract is attached as an extended and that's an appropriated salary of eighty-four thousand from August fourth, twenty fourteen to June thirty, twenty fifteen. So it's not like, you know, Mrs. Selby is not being paid. She's being paid, uh, for that position and she would receive under this contract a yet to be determined amount to be put in as acting superintendent.
Ma'am, we made a statement that per this contract is still being paid.
I have a copy of this contract and nowhere in this contract does it state he gets five months sick pay. Can you help me out with that?
Uh, sure. The, uh, you're correct, it doesn't say that, but a contract only permits, the contract only permits termination for good and just cause and until the contract is terminated, uh.
Okay, but he's on sick leave, so why are we still paying him his regular salary when his contract states that he gets seventeen paid sick?
Because you have a contract for three years and that contract is still in existence.
But he's on sick leave.
I understand that. It doesn't make the difference unless the board takes other actions.
So truth be told, he's not on sick.
He is on sick. That is the truth be told. Okay. I did not have a letter to the effect that he's not.
And I need to ask you a question.
Sure.
We have presented a deficit elimination plan to the board and also to the state.
Sure.
They have approved a three-year program under the understanding that we will be staying for the next three years.
Sure.
So what do I respond to the state? July, come July one, uh, Mr. Hill is still out of leave and we have no one in this contract until June thirty.
Well, I would anticipate that that's not going to be an issue for you, so I think we will have a resolution of this matter long before June thirty of twenty fourteen.
So are you telling me it's now April, we only have two months left? Um, I've submitted a plan, which I want to support and I want to help our kids. So you're telling me in two months, we need to have someone else in that position? Is that what you said?
No, I'm not saying that. Right now you have Mr. Hill as your superintendent on the contract. And until something occurs where he is terminated or not terminated, but that contract continues until or unless he's terminated for reason, for good and just cause, it continues to July, or I'm telling you, June thirty, twenty seventeen.
That's what I'm asking the question because when the state asks me, number one, what are we going to do come July one if Mrs. Selby's contract is June thirtieth? What do I tell the state if it's not resolved?
It will be resolved. We found that it will be resolved.
I have a question. Says acting superintendent's appointment, do we?
We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Stage acting superintendent's appointment agreement. Is understanding you're moving from acting to interim or is acting appropriate?
Well, I wrestled with that, uh, for quite a, quite a while. Uh, interim to me suggests that you don't have a superintendent and that's why I changed it to acting. And in my communications with Ms. Selby and verbally we've been using that term acting and so that's why I chose acting as opposed to interim. Interim to me would mean you don't have a superintendent currently and you're looking for a superintendent, so that's why I chose acting. That's the word.
President, Nancy. Let's speak. Um, I don't want to labor the issue because it needs to be decided, uh, what the board's going to do regarding my stipend, um, but I'll be very honest, I cannot agree with the spirit in which this contract was written and I will not sign it as it is written. I, I'm sorry, uh, there's some inequities in the contract that I cannot agree with. And I'll tell you, it's written in a way that is not beneficial to the district and believe it or not, that is why I am here, not for me, not for you, but for the students of Bridgeport Spalding Community Schools. Thank you. The way this contract is written, it will put this district in turmoil come June thirtieth. Because we have absolutely no guarantee that the issue with Mr. Hill will be resolved. We have absolutely.
I just made my guarantee.
Excuse me. We have absolutely no guarantee. We have two priority schools in this district. We only have four schools in this district. So to have two out of four schools in priority means we are a district in priority. My team and I have been working very hard to come up with a district improvement plan that's in alignment with the school improvement plans, that's in line with the state common core standards and to cut it off June thirtieth, not knowing whether or not we really have a superintendent at that time or not, is, is potentially putting our district in further turmoil and because of that, I cannot agree to this. We started the year chaoticly and I don't want to end the year chaoticly. One last thing, I had a conversation with, um, there's a team of Michigan Department of Education experts monitoring our district, monitoring the priority schools, monitoring the district. I didn't call them, they called me. They meet with us on a regular basis. They asked me today what is the status of my acting superintendency when I told them that, well, there is a draft contract that specifies that as of June thirtieth of this year, it's terminated with absolutely no renewal clause. They were, well, speechless. They were speechless because what this means is all the work that they have been doing to this point to help us get back on track academically and financially is about to be thrown out the window.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that. Let me just say, I'm the one that drafted the contract at the board's. First time the board has had their eyes on it. I took the contract and we used it in the past and made some changes to it. As I said, I do not allow paying two superintendent contracts because then they're going to be up there saying, now we need to pay two superintendent contracts. The reason for the termination is again to avoid the state law on the notice of non-renewal administrator contract. It is purely from a legal standpoint. The, the board can make whatever changes to this contract and Ms. Selby doesn't like it. She can provide me with other changes. She saw the contract earlier today. I did not see, I made most of the changes. The only changes I didn't make were relative to the stipend I drew, the amount. I took that out because the board hasn't made the decision and I made some language changes that she asked me to make. Nowhere did I receive any information today that, um, you know, Ms. Selby does not like the spirit or intend of the contract. So this, this contract I drafted, the board has nothing to do with the board's contract. It's a standard contract that we have, that our firm mentioned in the past and, um, you know, this is the first time the board's looking at it. I was in Houston for weddings on Thursday and Friday and this is the first opportunity.
So what you're saying is put the carton for the horse. Pardon? So what you're saying is put the carton for the horse.
Madam President.
No, what I'm saying is the board asked that I bring a contract tonight, which I did.
And?
Yes.
Please address us.
Madam President, may I make a recommendation, please? It is clear to me that we don't have an agreement, at least in concept at this point in time. And I certainly don't want to enter into a decision this evening that would put us at risk or acting superintendent Selby at risk. So I believe that the appropriate action to take is that we need to have this agreement where there is an agreement in concept and terms between our attorney and Ms. Selby. And that it be vetted through the personnel committee and that it needs to be returned on April twenty-seventh when we meet for a board vote. Because at this point in time, I believe that there is just simply inadequate agreement to do that. Now, I believe that if we have at least agreed, an agreement in concept relative to the process that we follow, that we can assure the state that we will have an agreement on April twenty-seventh.
I can at least pass the board on.
Okay. If it is the intent of this board to appropriately compensate Ms. Selby for her work, she's done as acting superintendent. she's done as acting superintendent. The fact that we now have a disagreement about the language, I don't know that the right place to ferret that out is here.
I'm gonna, and I know, Andy, you put something together based on an audit. And I'm not trying to attack you or say anything. I think the board needs to decide, at this point, what to do, so I can respond to the state. Also, this has nothing to do with you. Come June 30th or before, because the DAP is sent into the state every month, the question will be asked when I meet with the state, what are we gonna do come July one? You know, and the board knows, there's no way we will have someone in place, whatever happens, July one. I know that, the board knows that. My concern is what this district will do financially. My concern is what will students and parents respond when there's no one in that spot, July one? And my als, my other concern is, is, and this is probably to the board, why are we doing what we're doing to the state? You can't answer that question. The board's gonna have to answer that question.
And I appreciate, I, I just want, I just want everyone to, to make sure. If the board, yeah, in fairness to the board, I was gone last week for a few days. I did not have direction as far as what I needed to put in the contract, so I took a contract that has been used many times in firm. And so I did not mean, uh, like I said, I want to make it really clear that I'm concerned about the non-renewal provision of state law, and that's why I put the June 30 termination date. We could talk about that if that's a big issue. For Ms. Selby, Personnel Committee, and the board, if we really need it, that we could discuss those issues. That's all. I'm not trying to make a problem for anybody. As I said, I worked with Ms. Selby, I don't have a problem with her.
I understand from the board's standpoint, it was interim, and it was changed to acting.
I changed that myself.
Okay.
So if that, if that's your understanding, that wasn't my understanding, I didn't know that.
Okay.
That's my fault, that's my fault. That's why this is a draft, because it's meant to be a draft of the board tonight. That was the intent.
Okay.
Yeah, it was not intended, it was not my intent that the board would execute this agreement tonight, having first seen it for the first time tonight.
Well, listen, we were pulling forward, not even from her, that we couldn't use a word interim, we had to use a word.
Okay, I apologize, I did not share that with you.
I mean, again, I just want to make it clear that I'm the one that chose the wording, I'm the one that drafted it without input from the board, which typically I wouldn't do. The only reason I did it is because everyone wanted it for the meeting tonight. And I stayed up till 3:30 last night, after my plane got back from Dallas, so that Ms. Selby would have a draft this morning to look at. So you can put it all, it's all my, it's my responsibility. If there's any questions or confusion, or somebody doesn't like how it's done, put the blame on them.
Let's, let's focus on the issue of Andy, and then what I need to resolve this issue. And if the board, if it's the board's pleasure, then I really believe that we can go forward with making certain that, number one, the agreement that we want to enter into with Ms. Selby is of mutual benefit both to the board and Ms. Selby. If there needs to be a renewal element within the contract, that's fine. I think the, the understanding is, is that we want to maintain an acting superintendent until such a time as we don't have a current contractor in this district, at which point in time, that terminology can change to whatever we so choose, but the reality is, is I think legal counsel is trying to revise us to avoid another legal conundrum, and that's why we're papering here. So, as I said earlier, I really think that we need to get two parties in agreement relative to the language that's contained in the document. That it needs to be vetted by the Personnel Committee through, you know, the finances and all of this stuff. And it needs to be brought back on April 27th for review, and we need to have it more than the night for, so that we can make sure that we're all in agreement, right? I'm trying to get us to the endpoint, and that is, we need to have an agreement. Because we have an audit relative to the title funds, that we're gonna lose money. And I, I get all of that, and we don't want to treat anybody poorly. But we also need to make certain that Mrs. Selby is compensated correctly, because we've got title funds that are currently been supporting her, her wage, when she's been an acting superintendent. And I understand you've got to, you've got to take money out of general funds to address that compensation, that stipend. So we need to address this.
Ms. Selby, is your biggest concern, and I want to commend you, because you have broad stability. I think you will continue to bring stability, and I think you're doing a good job. Is the biggest concern you have is the clause where you want to go past June 30th?
My biggest concern is that I don't want this district to undergo yet another change by having another superintendent brought in this year, and have to start all over again with the Michigan Department of Education, trying to maintain our priority schools. That's my biggest concern. I think it would be more appropriate, be much more appropriate, and it was recommended, I do believe, by the VEA that my tenure remain, if we do not have a superintendent. If we, if we, if Mr. Hill returns, and that's a whole different topic, but if we do not have a superintendent, then my desire is to remain until the end of the 2016 year. And then, at, at your valuation, if you need to make another recommendation, you need, you need to make a move, Ms. Selby.
Well, my recommendation is, we definitely do not need to rush into timing this year. I believe, you know, this board member anyway, wanted to get this resolved a lot sooner than today, and that's my frustration. I'm a little frustrated if I heard you, right, because we just as a members, I just saw this just now. So I take a little offense at some of your language. Okay? And I understand where you're coming from.
Sure.
But this is the first time I saw this, I'm frustrated, because some time ago, I wanted to get this done. And every board member here knows this, and everybody sitting at this table knows that. And so this is frustrating, we don't need to rush into this. We need to do what's right for the students. And you're doing a good job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've got enough, that's enough, I've got to say.
And, and can I just add? My comments are not really brought against anyone or person in particular, it's the whole system. What we need to do regarding the Michigan Department of Education and the auditors is a stipend and a time period. That's all. This long contract, they need to know that I am being paid to do this other job that I am doing, and that is acting superintendent of this district. I, I'd be very honest, and I got this contract, which is a little different from the contract that we just got a few minutes ago. I got this at 3:20 this morning. Sorry, can I finish? 3:20 this morning, AM, and then what was just handed out, and there's a, there's an amount on this contract that I got on my hand. But the contract you have is a little bit different than the contract that I was given this morning, or I live on it this afternoon too, because there were some changes that my county asked to be made. You know, the big thing is, we need to make sure that we're in compliance with the Michigan Department of Education, and they say, this person who is acting superintendent needs to be compensated for what she's doing. This long contract, I, I, I mean, maybe it's necessary, but it needs to be resolved probably before April 27th. And you did, you absolutely, yes, you did, yes, and I, yes, absolutely did. Want to get it resolved.
Well, I guess at the end of the day, if we need to meet ahead of April 27th, that's fine, we can call a special board meeting. But from a process standpoint, or you know, agreement that we need to do is to first come to grips with a meeting of the minds of the two parties, and then have it better than the Personnel Committee brings to the board. You can deal with that?
I'd, I'd just like to say, the Michigan law, though, requires certain items to be in a superintendent contract. They require that it be in writing, and, which is some of the reasons for the language, as opposed to just a one-page stipend-type contract that you had for the ministry contract. Let's not forget, I'm not superintendent, I'm acting superintendent. I understand that. Also, under section four, or paragraph 14, I added a new sentence that if for any reason, or earlier today, if, if for any reason this party's desire of Ms. Selby to continue to work as acting superintendent, after the June 30th, 2015 termination date of this agreement, the party shall negotiate a new agreement. I never said that it wouldn't be. I, it doesn't say that, it just said a new agreement would be negotiated. And then my final point is, the contract, Ms. Selby, that you, the draft that you have, is an amount that I put in on my own without any discussion at all with the board, which I should not have done. And again, I'll take responsibility with that, but given the time and the urgency with which everyone wanted to, that's, you know, again, that was my mistake. So, uh, you know, I did the best I could. Apparently, it wasn't, you know, where we all needed to be. And I look forward to working on something that the board and Ms. Selby can agree to, either on or before April 27th.
Request that the contract be rewritten with the agreement of Ms. Selby and our legal counsel. That it be taken to the Personnel Committee for review, and returned back to the board for consideration on April 27th.
Second. Move by Bob, second by Penny. Roll call, please. Discussion?
Any more discussion, you hear? Ms. Selby, your biggest, I think, concern was stability, correct?
Absolutely.
And I didn't get to this part of this 14 that she mentioned.
And this is different from the contract that I had on my hand.
Well, I'm not like this, I'll ask, but I agree with you with the non-renewal stability. But as I read this very quickly, it does say, it looks like there is a clause under for renewal. Is that, is a bad, is this concern you had?
That is, but I'm gonna tell you in all honesty, my attorney would tell me, because this contract is different from the one that I had on my hand two hours ago, and the one that I was given early this morning, that I would not sign this, I would not agree to this until my attorney's here. Uh, and it might be, and it might be okay, but I, I just put down a good contract.
Well, for a contract to exist, there are certain criteria that need to be met. In this particular case, those criteria are not met. And the only way they will be met is for us to follow a procedure whereby the recipients of this contract, I use something, is an agreement in terms and conditions, right? So at this point in time, we don't have an agreement, at least in concept. And I don't know that I want to rush into this, I think we've got a motion, and if we address that, we're prepared.
She may go just look at it with her attorney and decide if this is...
That, that is perfectly her prerogative as well, right?
And I will give that information to the Personnel Committee ASAP?
Sure.
So, so we can speed up this process? I would be very happy to do that.
I, I would like to ask, before we vote, that the Personnel Chair decide now on a meeting date, so we won't have any concerns about people not meeting?
Jay is up here to see when these fees available.
When you're the president.
Mr. Lang, will you consider, because he has come on to a vote, so the motion doesn't belong to the floor yet, to, um, add to your motion the date?
In order to maybe expedite this, the board could ask the Personnel Committee to meet on or before April 20th in order to perform this activity. And then the board's providing a directive with the Personnel Committee and work to accommodate that requirement.
I need you to call me ASAP, I need to set up a Personnel meeting, it's emergency days.
Yeah, we will meet before the next working order.
On or before the 20th?
Wednesday, 20th.
A Monday.
On Monday.
On or before next Monday?
Yes.
I will try.
So Madam Chair, I would like to stay, and the audit is a decision will be made on the 27th?
That's the intention.
If not before, okay.
Motion will be amended such that the Personnel Committee is directed to meet on or before April 20th, 2015. This is Madam Superintendent Selby.
Is this for...
Well, I've amended the motion, we have to...
Huh?
No. The author of the, the author of the motion made a change. It doesn't belong to the floor yet, so we have the authority to do that. We have a motion, and we have a second by Ms. Morris, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're ready for the roll call vote, it's open to the board? Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sagan? Acting superintendent's update?
Hey, I'm over. It is kind of a very long night. We do have a report in front of you, and, um, Atkins, our, our car plane has been approved the last month, and I told you that if, if they wanted us to make this one little adjustment, and that was regarding the, um, the evaluation, that was done. We have a quarterly report in front of you. If, um, if you don't mind, in the interest of time, we will not go over that right now, but in our next, uh, well, whatever meeting you want to do it in, finance? Or we can do it at the next board meeting, the 27th, if you don't mind in the interest of time. Um, our Atkins building of the elementary and middle school is now wired for the internet. Now, somebody may say, well, we're wired for it. Well, it's just kind of piecemeal, passport, but it is now officially wired, and that was over the spring break. Yahoo! In time for the M-Step. Although I understand we did have a few little pickups today, but we were not by ourselves. Lots of schools in the state had little pickups, and big pickups with, uh, M-Steps. Thomas White, several of us, um, attended Thomas White today and observed the Great Seat Program. Thank you very much. Board members who could attend, and I know some of you who couldn't attend, still want to come and visit Great Seat, the building, and see Great Seat in action. And I'm sure the Thomas White teachers would be more than happy for you to wander and, and visit and to see what they're doing in the, uh, the Great Seat Program, which is all helping our students with their literacy. Bridgeport High School, we've got equipment in for Project Leads Away, and we're very excited about lots of potential for Project Leads Away and our initiative of, at the high school and in the district, and getting, bringing our district into the 21st century, century with the STEM initiative of science, technology, engineering, and math. And Project Leads Away is just one step in that direction. We have other ideas that we're working toward for our district. There was superintendent's retreat a couple weeks ago. One of the things that we talked about is the New York packet, Common Calendar. That was voted on for the next five years for the county. If you have any questions or concerns, make sure I get that to the VEA. Please let me know. I do want to invite you, one of the big ideas that came up with the superintendent's retreat was the idea of discussing throughout the districts and the counties, the idea of going to a... to a balanced school calendar countywide, just in the discussion stages. And there was an informational meeting on April, no, excuse me, May 14th, at the ISB, May 14th, 5 o'clock, and they're asking every district to send a team of stakeholders, which would mean at least a board member, someone from the different unions, the parents, maybe a teacher from every building, with the idea of gathering information, bring back to our district so we can meet and perhaps have a discussion on whether or not we're interested in moving towards a balanced school calendar. And for just, just a quick definition for those who are like, what's that, balanced school calendar? It used to be called year-round school, but it's called a balanced school calendar. And from a little bit that I know, and I expect to learn a lot more about it, it's more, it really is balanced in that it balances out the number of days we're in school and the number of days we're formally in school, the number of days we are informally out of school. And for those days that we're, we're formally out of school, the building, the districts are still open, and there's activities going on where teachers are still there, who want to, and other staff members, bus drivers, aides, food services, which is real important. Our kids will still get fed every day, whether we're in session or not. And so, those are just some of the, some of the highlights, but there's a lot that I don't know, and I'm sure there's a lot that most of us don't know about the balanced school calendar. I invite the board to, to attend the informational meeting on May 14th. I think Mr. Allen has already agreed to attend. Yes. And more are welcome if you are interested, willing to bring, attend, learn more information, and bring them back to the board. Tending the superintendent's meeting last week, lots of agenda items, Saginaw Valley STEM Ambassador Program for both students and teachers and folks, because I know some of the people involved in that initiative on Saginaw, at Saginaw Valley, and because it's going to be good for our district, I'm going to explore as many options as I can on getting our district involved in the Saginaw Valley STEM Ambassador Program. And there's a separate sheet, we've had lots of professional development this past month, and Mrs. Silvy, our professional learning coordinator, submitted a one-page sheet, well, about the bulk size, that gives you an update on the activities that, district-wise, that our teachers have been participating in, and some of the things that are coming up. I again want to congratulate Cindy Weaver, Cruz Weaver, and her robotics team for the flying activity in our working year in participating in robotics competition. And I am, I'm very serious, I'm very excited about the potential for our, for next year in our competition. And I probably, we could say a lot more, but it's almost 9:00, and I think I'm done.
Okay, more comments, Bob?
Thank you. I'd like to extend my appreciation to Thomas White staff who invited the board and other folks to come take a look at the Great Seat program this morning. I enjoy it for, for the nice opportunities here, our efforts in that space, and also to see the order in which our students act and conduct themselves, and that's very nice to be a part of that. Also, I'd like to thank the administrators for taking the time to make sure that we're recognizing our students as we have here this evening. Appreciate that. Always nice to be able to see when we highlight the good things, the kids are good, so thank you, please keep it up. Good, thank you.
Teddy?
I would like to agree with Mr. Long. I was over at Thomas White this morning, too, observing the program over there, and it is awesome. It is just hard to believe that we don't have more of our students in Bridgeport in that program, so that's why I'm gung ho about marketing that program and getting our Bridgeport students in that pre-k, kindergarten program. If we grow our students and have them prepared for first, second, third grade, that's our school district right there. And what's happening at the high school now, I've sat at several meetings this week, as you heard, meetings that extended beyond two hours, discussing programs at the high school with Mr. McCarthy, and just the technology with Mrs., what was her name? Silvy? Silvy. And so, a lot of positive things are happening, and thank, thank you, Long, for coming to the meetings and being so committed, and so...
I want to start by congratulating Mrs. Durand and your team, having the plan approved. I know we've got a lot of you, a lot of time left for that. Now, it's our job to give you what you need so you can successfully handle that, let it go through. I did get to visit Thomas White through the reading month, and one of the things I wanted to say this evening is how impressed I was with that building. Not only just the building itself, but every classroom was organized, every child was respectful and happy, seemed happy in their classroom and their environment, and kudos to all of you, I think you have an awesome building over there, thank you. The robotics, Mrs. Weaver, Cruz Weaver, that's awesome, five people, and to make it that far as to... I also believe that it's time for this board to meet, and we have a policy that dictates that we meet at least annually, and the only thing that should be on that agenda is for us to review our own performance, and we are way overdue for that. And I would suggest that we do it in the near future, that it be an open meeting. We're here so that we can be open and transparent, but it's an opportunity for us to get things on the table, to resolve issues. Using our policy, I know we should be doing it anyway. The last thing I want to touch on is Carol, I want to thank you for bringing stability to our district. I know the changes that I've seen, just from the times that I've been in the buildings, and so, I want to thank you for your efforts. You've done this for several months now, and you're just now talking about compensation for you, and I think that is certainly shows your dedication to this district and your kids in a certain, so thank you for that.
Larry?
I would also like to reiterate that and say thank you, Carol. You really have brought stability. I'd like to thank the principals, the administration, you know, I talked to Mr. Legato here for, it was quite a while outside, and just the passion you could see, not only in his speech, but in his eyes, in his demeanor. The teachers, we're doing good things, and it is frustrating as a board member to sit here and not just be able to say everything and get to the answers, and it's slow, lonely, and that's the most frustrating part. And I do agree with Pat, we call it, or I've tried to call it retreats in the past, but we do need to reflect within and grow, and have an open mind, and know that we can learn from each other, and I've said that from day one. And it's something I do agree with Pat, and I think everybody else on the board would agree with that, that is lacking. This is, as a board member, it's a thankless job that's very frustrating. I'll just leave it at that.
Jonathan?
I'd like to begin by congratulating the teachers and the students for their recognition for the month. I have a new respect for what you do as teachers. To the administrators, Mr. McCarthy with his brilliant ideas, I heard some of them in that curriculum meeting, to all of you, my hat is off to you. I got involved in this school district at the board level because I had two grandchildren at, one at Thomas White, the other at Atkins. They're now in school, out of state, and doing very well, and I had an opportunity this week because they spent the resurrection week with me to just reflect on how important it was for them to get a start in the Bridgeport Spalding School District. So, I appreciate what they have received and how they're doing now. As a board member, it is difficult to sit here and to hear you, and sometimes not be able to respond to some of your concerns, and not be able to, from this seat, just let you know how well we hear you, we're parents, regardless of the ages of our children, we're parents, and we can certainly appreciate the frustrations and concerns of our parents. At this point in my tenure as a board member, I do plan on continuing, but I do also feel that we strongly, desperately need a change in our leadership. And I am going to ask Mrs. Sageman if she would resign tonight as president, and if she chooses not to resign as president, I'm going to make a motion according to the policy that will have her voted out as president. So, I'm asking you now, Mrs. Sageman, would you step down as president from the Bridgeport Spalding School District Board of Education?
I said before, if somebody wants to take it over, they can. They can have the headaches and the calls at 11, 12 o'clock at night. I've tried to do the best I can, I've tried to help the kids.
Thank you, but I ask, are you going to resign? I, I make a motion that Marty Sageman be removed by vote of the board as president of the Board of Education, Bridgeport Spalding School District. Do I have support?
I will support. It's appropriate at this time, because of the nature of the motion, that someone else either volunteer or be appointed to be temporary chair until the vote is over.
Mrs. Sageman, I would respectfully ask that you not make this, do this, please.
Yeah, here you go.
I would respectfully ask that you not force this board to vote. You said that if there's someone wanting to take that chair, then you give it up. I wouldn't relish the thought, but at the end of the day, I don't know that this action is going to be in the best interest of our kids.
Yeah, I said before, if somebody wants it, they can do it.
Would you please resign and not force this board to do this, please?
Okay, here you go.
I'm asking you to please not force this board to take a vote.
Well, let's it.
I will do it, if that's acceptable to the board. At the end of the day, that's a decision that's made by the board.
Then actually, Jay should step up as...
That's fine.
I would be willing to do it as well.
Jay's vice president, he should move up to president.
I, I don't want to dictate at this point in time who fills the chair. I just don't want to tear this board into a position of having to make this choice. And so, I'm respectfully asking that you consider that, please. I think it would, it would serve our students better.
What?
I think that that would serve our students better. Sorry, I, I just don't want this to come to this.
Has that whoever wants it can have?
Yes, or no.
Actually, according to the rules, Jay should step up as president because he was the vice president, so Jay will be in charge of it.
Are you agreeing with your resident?
That's not necessarily the case.
Yes, it is.
It's a goal as far as...
It's board policy that when the, when the president's seat is vacant, the vice president moves up into the...
But you won't vacate the seat.
I just did.
Oh, so you're saying you just resigned?
Yes.
Okay, she's saying that she just resigned as board president.
Not until January.
The...
The board policy states that the vice president moves up, or the president moves.
I'd like an opportunity to interpret the board policy at a later time.
11:55.
I know where it is, yes. And I, I'm sorry, Mrs. Elvin, I didn't mean to be short. Should I read it?
Please.
"In the event that the motion to remove the president, board from office, the president shall be asked first by the person making the motion to step aside and allow the vice president or other officer to chair the meeting temporarily. If so asked, the president must temporarily vacate the chair or may elect to resign the president's needs voluntarily prior to the motion discussion and vote, which is only a temporary. I think procedurally, we would need to come to the next board meeting and ask, or I believe I need to do some investigations to work the appropriate actions from here. And I will consult with our parliamentarian to make sure that we do it properly."
So, we still have a motion on the floor? Remember Allen, remember Nelson?
I guess at this point in time, Member Allen, given that the resignation has been tendered, are you willing to apply a motion?
I, I just wanted to be very clear that we did get a resignation tender, and if so, I would throw my motion.
So, I did. You can know.
Parliamentarian, if at this point in time, if the presidency is vacated, vice president...
We need a motion to accept the resignation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we accept the resignation of Mrs. Sageman as president of the Bridgeport Spalding School District Board of Education.
Mr. Lang, if you're operating a temporary chair?
Yes, roll call, please.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sageman?
Yes.
I would like to state that I did enjoy reading for March's reading month at Thomas White, and I also enjoyed the Great Seat today. It was good to see that we are doing a lot with site say learning, because as a site say learner, I think so many of our kids get lost when it comes to reading because they came in with a phonetical way. I would also like to do a little bragging. I received Sports, High School Sports Scene Magazine, which my son, the wrestler from here, was listed as honorable mention, but the story that really goes behind this is that we wonder, when you spend all your time and effort helping all these kids and doing all these things for the kids, do they really appreciate it? Well, a couple weeks ago, I received a phone call from two different wrestlers, one from Detroit, one from Davidson, asking me if I had seen this newspaper. And I told him, no, I hadn't seen it, so they sent it to me on Facebook, and I took and I looked, and I found the address in here, so I contacted the guy that was in charge of the paper and asked him if I could get a couple copies, because of Charlie's name being here. And so, he called me back, and he said, as long as I pay the postage, they would send them to me. Well, I didn't get them, so I called him last week, and he said, well, the editor lived in the area, they were going to deliver me two, so when he came Friday, I had 10 copies instead of two. So, I phoned Charlie, and I let him know I have it. And he says, Mom, how about if I called these two boys that were on Facebook and asked them if they would like a copy, being that they were the ones that told us about it? So, when I sat there and told him, yeah, and one way, Facebook's me back, and he says, Mom, he says, after... Mom, he says, after all these years, you're still working and looking out for us kids, they says, you'll never quit caring about the kids, and that's the truth, because I'll tell you, the kids are the ones that give you the hugs, and let you know that they appreciated what you've done with them all these years.
Mr. Lang, I would like to make a final, I, I have a couple of thank yous, a few thank yous. I want to thank Mr. Brown, Mr. Andre, and this, the representatives from the Steel Workers Union for the collaborative spirit in which they've been working with me since I've been in this position, uh, and I, I thank them for working with me to get most of these issues, grievances resolved, and I hope to move forward from here in a positive way, and I, and I think we're going in the right direction, so I thank you very much for your support and all of it. And I also want to thank Mrs. Sageman for her, maybe years, she's not leaving the board, uh, but she is leaving the presidency, the chair, and I want to thank her for her tenure in that position, and all her dedication in that.